Welcome to Unraveling Education, the podcast that's part storytelling, part information, and part whodunit. We'll be investigating the underlying issues harming the public education system and identifying the key players involved. Welcome, I'm Danielle Ford, former trustee of the Clark County School District, the fifth largest district in the nation. In this episode, you will hear about my experience visiting Harvard for school board training, some of the interesting people I met, and how I realized that all the school board members in attendance were being brainwashed. Quick disclaimer, my feelings and opinions about this training does not reflect my feelings and opinions about Harvard itself. Everything that I'm going to share with you is specific to the packaged program that takes place on Harvard's campus. The details and the history about how this program developed, I am unclear about. But here's how the program, which is called ABC Accelerating Board Capacity, is explained on Harvard's website. It says, "This governance program has been exclusively designed by the Council for Great City Schools and PELP for school board members and superintendents in member districts of the Council of the Great City Schools, the nation's foremost coalition of large urban school systems." Which begs the question, what is PELP? And here's what the website says. "Topped by a team of faculty members from HBS, HGSE, and HKS within Harvard University, PELP Executive Education Programs feature a wide range of leadership cases and materials curated especially for K through 12 system leaders in partner organizations. Our two main institutes focus on system-level leadership at the superintendent level, as well as a customized program for governance in large urban districts developed in partnership with the Council of Great City Schools." You probably remember from the Diary of a New Trustee episode that all of the training that the CCSD Board of Trustees were receiving was from the Council of Great City Schools, and that their executive director was also advising Superintendent Jara in all of the district's operations and purchases, which is not only a conflict of interest, but also super sketch. This storytime episode continues from there. But first, this podcast relies on the generosity of supporters. If you would like to make a donation, you can visit unravelingeducation.com/sponsor to do so. It's greatly appreciated. So I'm super excited for this training, mostly because I had felt like I was in this bubble for six months and that I was being lied to about my role as a trustee. So I had a lot of questions for board members in other states. Up until this point, I had been repeatedly being told by the board president Lola Brooks and our board attorney Maryam Miller that I was out of line and I was trying to operate outside of my role, that I'm embarrassing the school board, I'm upsetting Nevada legislators, yada, yada. So in my head, I was like, I want to hear from other experienced elected trustees, whether or not any of that is true. And if the consensus is that they're right, then I might be prepared to back off. And if it's not, then that will be very validating for me and I will continue to fight for the board to get their power back. We received the materials ahead of time. I read and highlight everything. I create folders in my iPad, title all of the pages so that they're ready for my notes. Now, keep in mind that I dropped out of high school and community college. So I'm not too sure how things work at Harvard, but if they give out prizes for most prepared and best note-taking, I'm gonna win them both. We flew in the day before and everyone was at a hotel near the campus and I was at a hotel downtown by myself. When my secretary had sent the info and pricing, I just looked at the cheapest options and chose the coolest looking one of those. I hadn't made any friends or allies on the board yet. Now I know that with trips like this, everyone talks to each other ahead of time and goes, oh, where are you staying? And what flight are you taking? But this was my first big conference and no one asked me any of those things. But I am not complaining. They all met up and went to a dinner that has more than one fork. I walked around the arts district, listened to live music, went to the salsa club in my hotel. I was living my best life. How you doing? My point in saying that is to explain the board dynamics at that point and how I was basically the lone wolf, which is fine, I'm pretty used to that. But being the lone wolf isn't really a great thing because in the wild, the lone wolf dies. The next day, we checked into our dorms at Harvard. There's a book with a map and a schedule of all four days and a list of all the participants. Everybody is either a school board member or a superintendent. I prepare for the introductory lunch and the sessions that start that afternoon. I go through all the sessions, I finish prepping my notes for all of them, like I am ready to rock and roll. I walk into the first class and the seats had been pre-assigned. I find my place card. I am in the front row. Great. You see, when ADHD peeps are in the front row, we thrive and we often annoy the teacher. But when we're in the back of the class, we struggle and we annoy the other students. And that's why ADHD students usually find themselves in the back of the class after a seat change. Needless to say, I was usually in the back of the class, except for the few teachers who would have me sit next to them at their desks that I could help with grading assignments when I was done with my work, or help them keep an eye on the rest of the class. So back to Harvard, I'm in the front row, I'm raising my hand, I have all the answers. I'm barely aware that there's even other people there. I turned around a couple times to check out where the other board members were and I noticed where Superintendent Jara was and that he was sitting next to somebody whose name was not on the roster. I remember. I looked at everybody. I made a note to check my booklet when we returned back to the dorms. We'll call this person the mysterious stranger for now. I crush the rest of the session, like I am in the zone. It's just me, the professor, the screen, my iPad, and my questions and my opinions. I am a force. I am unstoppable. I even go back and I make better notes of my notes. Get to class the next day, start to pull out my chair. Wait, that's not my name. There had been a seating change and now I'm in the back, like as far back as possible, like I only had to scoot like two inches back and my back's against the wall. But I had a clear view of the classroom and even though everybody had changed seats, Jara was still sitting next to the mysterious stranger. And they seemed pretty chummy. This was clearly not the first time they had met. So every day, the sessions would end and then we would do personal time and then dinner. There were four sections of dorms and if you were not in that section, then you would have no reason to be there in that group's quarters, like with the kitchen and the lounge area and whatnot. And Lola Brooks was not in my group, thank God. So I start talking to some other trustees of different districts. I ask them their advice. I start explaining all the things that I've tried to do that I've been told no about, things like asking to pull items from the consent agenda for separate discussion or vote and being told I can't do that, wanting to discuss the superintendent's decisions and behavior either in private with our attorney or in public on the record, and then being told that it's not possible at all. And if I keep pushing, it will become harassment and then Jara will possibly be able to have a case against the whole board. I told them how I was told by our attorney not to post anything online because my business is online and I have a brand, so it could look like I am grandstanding about the school district stuff to try to get attention to myself. And then if I personally benefit, then it would be an ethics violation. They look at me like I'm crazy. They say, "That's not possible, but you're still new, right? I think you're just understanding it wrong." I'm like, "I don't think I am." Then they start teaching me the role. They say, "Your job is to oversee the superintendent. Your job is to oversee the spending of large purchases that are put into the consent agenda. Your job is to communicate with voters and parents in the community. And if social media is your way of communication, then that's that. As long as you're not promoting your business with your trustee page, then there's no problem." I'm like, "I know, I said all these things. I've been fighting them for six months. I'm constantly in trouble." And they keep telling me, "Don't do any of these things or else you will be going against the advice of your attorney and you will be personally liable." And they just kept going, "No, no, no, that cannot be right." So I'm feeling rather defeated and a little crazy. And I had to think back, like I am understanding everything, right? Like all these things did happen, right? I tell myself, yes, I know I am. So the next night after our sessions, we returned back to the dorm and those women I had spoken to like swarm me. They're going, "Oh, my God, what you told us is true. We started asking around and everybody agreed that you have no power. Over the past few years, your board has policyed itself into a box." Well, that's fucking great. So everybody knows this except for our own community. So now I'm like pissed. Now I want to know what kind of governance everyone else is using, who trains them and how do they evaluate their superintendent? So during dinners and during free time, I'm like meeting everybody. I'm not really a fan of pleasantries or small talk, but I'm on a mission, so I become a social butterfly. I'm flittering around, I'm like, "Hello, I'm Danielle. Oh, my gosh, I love your shoes. And how do you evaluate your superintendent?" I'm taking notes on my iPad, I'm getting referrals for consultants they've worked with and BT dubs the entire time, anytime that I was in the wild or AKA not in our dorm area. Lola Brooks was not any further than four feet away from me, just being super sleuth in her mind, listening in on what I was doing, but I did not care even a little bit. So our dorms were on the fourth floor and I would always take the stairs instead of the elevator. The next morning, I was walking down the empty stairwell alone, or so I thought, when a man emerged from the shadows. He'd been waiting for me and he was there to deliver a warning. Okay, it was slightly less cryptic than that. So this dude was a superintendent in my dorm group and working group, and so we had chatted a bunch. He was heading to breakfast and saw me coming, so he took the stairwell instead so that he could relay some information without prying eyes or Big Brother scene. Obviously, I will not be mentioning his name and here's why. He's like, "Hey, hey, just between us, you have your work cut out for you." He goes, "I don't usually attend these things, but my board really wanted to come. This is not my usual scene." He was doing a lot of head shaking. He says, "I know about your board and I would never treat my board like that. Even if I wanted to, I couldn't and I wouldn't want to." Soon, we were at the bottom of the corridor, so he waved me through the door and then he waited for a minute so that nobody would know that we spoke. Now let's talk about the sessions at the ABC Executive Training at Harvard. The lessons were produced and selected by the Council of Great City Schools. A handful of the sessions were part of PELP and were specific to board governance. The rest of the sessions are more conceptual, using case studies to take us through ways of thinking. Two of those sessions were about making good decisions and those are the two that I'm going to walk you through right now in the same exact way that the school board members were taken through them. The first session I'll be explaining was called "The Art and Science of Decision-Making." The material was a case study called Carter Racing. The professor who taught the session was Francesca Gino and she is the author of Rebel Talent, which I read a few months later and really enjoyed. This one was a two-session half-day workshop. So we were given a case study about car racing to review and then we were going to be asked to make a decision. Here's the short version, try to follow along. There was a huge car racing competition happening, the biggest of the year, which was very important for an up-and-coming racecar driver and his team. It was an hour before start time and the driver was second guessing whether he should race or not. His engine had failed seven of the 24 times that he'd raced that year. The engineers could not figure out why that happened, but the last few races had been fine. Well, two days before this big race, the driver had spoken to one of the engine mechanics who expressed concern about this big race because he felt like the gasket issue was due somehow to low outside temperatures. The racing team at this point was $80,000 in the hole and were really counting on $800,000 of a sponsorship that they'd acquired in which the driver only had to participate in the race to get. But if a failed gasket were to blow up the engine during a big televised race, his racing career would be over and the team would be permanently out of business. If he chose not to race, that sponsorship would still be good for next year's competition, but they would now be out that $80,000 and all eating ramen for a while. Additionally, there had been talks with more sponsors and the team was looking at $2 million or more annually in sponsorships if he were to race and place in the top five. Ultimately, this was the driver's decision to make. He asked the lead engineer about the engine mechanic's opinion that the low temperatures were affecting the gasket. The lead engineer sent him a graph of the seven engine failures that they'd had and the temperatures of each of those races, which showed that there had been engine failures both at high and low temperatures. And now today, on the biggest race of the year, the temperature was the lowest that it had been. The question presented was, should the driver race? Yes or no? We were broken up into 14 working groups of seven people, each from different school boards. The groups should all choose a leader and then arrive at a yes or no decision and then be ready to explain that decision to the rest of the class. We grab our materials and the information and all the groups go into 14 different conference rooms in multiple buildings. It wasn't just like one big room and everybody's working in different corners and you can kind of hear what everyone else is doing. It was like we were juries, like no devices, no communication with anyone on any other teams, and we were given about 40 minutes to discuss. So we all sit down and another board member is like, "I'll be the leader if everybody's okay with that." Okay, yeah, sure. He asks, "Any ideas of how we should do this? Does anyone want to start? I guess we could take turns, just pop in whenever." I had already made a decision, but I wasn't super sure how to explain my reasoning, so I was like sitting back hoping that somebody would say it first and I could be like, "Yes, that, that is what I was just about to say." The others start sharing their decisions. Someone's like, "Yes, we should race because the data shows that the weather doesn't make a difference and so it's like a coin toss and we shouldn't just throw it away because of what one person said." Someone else says, "Yes, we should race because the $2 million sponsorship isn't a sure thing yet and we don't know if that's going to be there next year. They might take the offer away, he should participate in the race, but take it easy and not overdo it." Someone else is like, "He should go for it. There's always going to be someone or something saying that you shouldn't do it. There's always a risk involved. You can't just change your mind on something in the 11th hour that you already made a decision to or committed to." So every single person is a yes and then he gets to me and I'm like, "No, it's a clear no." I'm still trying to figure out how to explain it, but no. He's like, "Well, maybe we should just take a vote?" And everyone's like, "Yeah, yeah." I'm like, "Just give me a few minutes, let me try to explain it." So I say, like, "I get why you're a yes if you're going off of the information that you all used to get to a yes, but a lot of the things that you are considering information are just assumptions, opinions, and personal beliefs. And those are fine to take into account, you know, when you're making a decision, but you are presenting them as facts and they're not facts. They're not impressed." So I'm like trying to think of some sort of comparison or an experience or something that I can use to explain why these are not facts, like I'm stalling. I'm like, "There's actually not a lot of information here. There's a lot of context, there's a lot of numbers, but none of it is actually relevant. And the only real information that was given to us shows that there's a lot of risk involved." Then an analogy comes to me. I say, "Let's look at this like if it was a poker tournament, okay? The dude's made it far in the tournament, but he's not in the money yet. He's short-stacked and now he's in the big blind, so he has to put chips in regardless of whatever cards he has, which won't leave him with very many chips." He looks at the cards he gets, they're a 10-5 offsuit, that is objectively a bad poker hand. Action goes around the table and everybody's calling, so now it's becoming like a decent-sized pot. He's hoping that everybody just calls and there's no more raises so that he can see the flop before making a decision for any more of his chips. But then small blind to his right raises. Now if he calls this raise, then he's going to be all-in and he is risking his tournament life if he loses. So he starts thinking, like he's thinking, "It's not a good hand, but there are worse hands. I could get lucky. There are five more cards coming, I could flop a full house. I could catch a straight on the turn of the river or a flush. I could even end up with my 10 as part of a royal flush." There's actually a lot of ways he could win if he really thinks about it. There's like a lot of pluses if he's looking for them and these things do happen, you know, they happen and then everyone at the table goes, "Well, that's poker." And if any of those things did happen, then he would be positioned to easily get to the final table, which would bring at least one sponsored deal for next year. Plus, he put chips in for the big blind, so he's already down that much. Plus, there's risk to everything. So at this point, I tell them, his thinking is using his beliefs and assumptions to justify his decision because he wants to win the hand. But poker is all about calculated risk and in this case, the reward is not worth the risk. And it's the same with the race. In this situation, racing is an all-in move. If he burns out on the track, he's for sure going to lose everything he has right now, which is his sponsorships, his reputation, and his entire career. The $80,000 that they've already spent in costs and entry fees is just the price to play. It's like a big blind. That is no longer his money and it should have no relevance on his decision to go all-in or fold and wait for a better hand or the next race. The sponsorships that he's so scared of losing, just like the chips in the pot and all the chips that might be added to the pot by all the players that might call and call the raises, those are not his. They're not his yet, so by folding, he's actually not losing anything. So now knowing that the odds or the mechanic are clearly saying that you are going to lose if you race or you go all-in, and now you know that there's zero risk to not racing or folding, like why wouldn't you just do that? It's risking everything for nothing. I'm like, "All the talks of these future deals are not tangible things and they should not be considered when everything is on the line. Like it's not worth the chance." And the group was like, "You know, yeah, you're right." Music to my ears. The leader says, "That makes so much sense, but you have to explain it to the class." I'm like, "Gladly." So we go back and the professor tells us, "Team leader, write your number on the board under your decision." So the board has like a line down the middle with yes on one side and no on the other side. A few groups had returned before us and they were all yeses. He looks at me, he was like, "No no's on that side." I'm like, "Do it, do it, do it." He writes our number under no. We take our seats and we watch as the other groups return and one by one, they write their number on the side of the yeses. We were the only no. A group leader and I kind of look at each other, look at the other members in our group. I'm kind of second guessing myself now. All the teams are explaining their decisions and they're all the same things that I had heard from our group originally. She calls on our team leader and he says, "Danielle's going to explain it." Danielle in the back there. I'm like, "If this was a poker tournament..." Go through all the reasoning for the whole class. Then the professor says, "Okay." It's now five minutes before the race and some more data has just come in. She hands out another graph of the temperatures, which looks similar to the other one, except instead of using the times that the engine failed as data, it has the times that the engine did not fail. And every single time that the engine had not failed, it was always in warmer temperatures. So now we knew that while the engine did fail a couple times when it was warmer, which could have been for any reason, there was not one single instance of success, not one time did the engine make it the entire race when the temperatures were lower. Then she says, "Talk to your teams for a few minutes and if you decide that you would like to change your decision, you can, one more time, just switch your number to the other side." Our group members look at each other, we're feeling good, we're like, no reason to get up, we're sitting back comfortably. A few of the groups switched to no, do not race, but most of them were still yeses. Then she tells us that the driver chose to race, a gasket failed, and the engine blew. Also, surprise, this was a real case study, however, the details had been switched. The real event was the Challenger explosion. Everyone like gasps, I'm like, "Oh, snap." She also revealed that when groups are presented with that second piece of data at the same time as everything else, 100% of groups choose not to race. There were a couple lessons to take from this. First, the driver should have valued the opinion of the mechanic because he was the one working with the car and his experience means that his gut feelings should have mattered. Instead, the driver listened to the person in management with the fancy title who delivered incomplete data as a way to sway the driver's decision. I thought this was a fantastic lesson and not just because I absolutely dominated it, but also because I have witnessed these scenarios play out within CCSD many times. Educators who actually work with kids are continually ignored. The higher the title, the more your opinion is valued. And huge decisions are often made based on data that is not confirmed as accurate or even complete. So the next day, I am still coming off my high of absolutely crushing the lesson yesterday. I may have been a little gloaty about it. I can be kind of an asshole sometimes, okay? This is not news, but I'm feeling super good and I am ready for the next sessions. Like I'm hoping there are more trick questions coming, like let's go. Now, the second session that I'm going to explain to you was called "Making Important Decisions Strategically." The material was a case named "Finding a CEO for Philadelphia: Searching for a Savior." The professor who created the material and taught the session was John Kim, co-founder of PELP. So John Kim opens up the session by leading us through the material, which explains what the Philadelphia school district was like at one point. There were crazy teacher shortages, school violence was out of control, budget shortfalls, low test scores, high poverty, it was a mess. Then a search for a new superintendent, a savior, began. The board had received a list of candidates and narrowed it down to three, but they could not agree on one. Now, our task was to read through the information about each candidate and determine who was best for the job. The first one was a superintendent of a small district. The second one was a military general with no education experience. The third one was a superintendent of a very large school district. The materials included the background and experience of all three candidates, but I'm not going to go into all of that with you because it doesn't really matter that much. What matters is the last paragraph, which says, "Even though the finalists were all strong leaders, none was the perfect candidate. As they moved through the rating process, they realized there were risks associated with each of the finalists and that no matter whom they chose as a governing body, they would need to create an environment of support for their new CEO." Hmm, okay. Professor John Kim then asks, "So, who's the right choice for CEO?" He opens it for discussion and several hands go up, including mine. I'm thinking, "Another trick question, my specialty." Someone answers, "They think that the first one is best because they're young and there's room to grow. Someone else likes the third one because they have experience in a large district. More votes for one, more votes for three, nobody supports the second guy." Finally, I get called on. I say, "Actually, I don't think they should choose any of them. You see, the right criteria is not being considered. They're working off of this list of qualifications, which includes most qualified as-is, able to assemble a team quickly, able to produce midterm results in two years, and potential for long-term growth." I say, "They should start over by first reevaluating that criteria. Or instance, adding the potential to adapt and continue to grow in the role and not just be good enough as-is. The care and concern for people in the schools and the community, the skills to build and grow a strong team and not just assemble one as quickly as possible. And the ability to like actually make impactful, positive changes to the school district and not just in two years produce results on a spreadsheet." I say, "This is too big of a decision to just settle on somebody, a superintendent, who's not a heck yes by the full board." John Kim then says, "Well, I have a surprise. This was a real case study, but some of the names and dates had been changed." I'm thinking, "Another point for Danielle." I am planning my acceptance speech. He continues, "And many of you got it right. The correct choice was number one." I'm starting to raise my hand. I'm prepared to defend my honor. Then he turns to another attendee and he says, "And that superintendent is sitting right here and he's been amongst you the whole time. It's William Height, the superintendent of Philadelphia." And everyone's like, "Whoa, cool, oh, your case study." I'm like, "Cool, cool, cool, yeah, yeah, yeah. This is not awkward at all." So Superintendent William Height stands up and he explains how bad the district was when he got there and that it is thriving now and that they have lots of money, they have no teacher shortage, they have zero, yes, zero, school violence. I listened intently, I liked everything he was saying. I find Philadelphia Superintendent William Height after the session and I ask him lots of questions. I hadn't really talked to him the whole time because he was always with Jara too. Jara had like a handful, like a group of men that he was with that he knew very well. He was one of them. I literally had to like step in front of Jara to get any face time with him. And I was impressed. He's a super nice dude, charismatic, logical. I'm thinking like, "How can we get this guy to be our superintendent? Like, can we trade?" But keep in mind, I was going off of limited information. Until months later, when I was in major research mode, trying to figure out why Superintendent Jara was destroying the Clark County School District and why Board President Lola Brooks was not just letting him get away with it, but also helping and protecting him. So I'm in research mode and I'm watching a documentary called Backpack Full of Cash, which is available for $10 on Vimeo, FYI. And Matt Damon is explaining to me, Matt Damon's the narrator, he's explaining to me how billionaire Eli Broad has a superintendent training academy, or had because he passed, but he had a superintendent training academy called Broad Academy, which teaches aspiring school leaders a set of ideals that are anti-public education and pro-big-business. And then he gets them placed into large school districts as superintendent, or I'm sorry, CEO. And sure as shit, there's Philadelphia Superintendent William Height, Jara's buddy, as one of the graduates from this academy. I'm like, "I think back to this lesson." I read through it again. I go online, I look for more information about the superintendent search process because it was a real thing. I learned that the other superintendent referenced number three was from Clark County, Pedro Martinez, who also was a graduate of the Broad Academy. So of the three choices that the Philadelphia school district had, one was a joke and two of them were fellows of the same program and friends. Oh, my God, right? There's so much more coming about this and we will begin connecting dots very soon. So make a note of this. So one of the days in this training, we had been put through this intense four-hour session in which we learned that it's not a good idea to make important decisions without enough information. And then the next day, there's a lesson literally called "Making Important Decisions Strategically." And the lesson that we were supposed to take from that is that the Board of Trustees, when presented with a group of superintendents, should just choose one, even if they don't Even if they don't think any of them are good enough, because the district needs a CEO. Somebody needs to manage everything in the district, including all the money. And everything will be fine as long as the board members blindly support their CEO and create a nice environment for them. Oh my God. When looking back at this session, it became very clear that the intent was to brainwash the boards. And that's how it's done, little by little. The definition of brainwashing is to cause someone to think or believe something by using methods that make a person unable to think normally. So taking people through thought processes that do not end with original ideas or encourage creative thinking and instead only have one answer is brainwashing, also called indoctrination. To be clear, taking people through thought processes, which opens their mind and leaves the answer up to them, is not brainwashing. That's encouraging critical thinking. Taking people through a series of questions or facts that lead to only one answer, that's not brainwashing. That's informing or educating. But taking people through a thought process, which only leads to one answer, is brainwashing. Oh my God. So much, oh my God. Okay. Seriously, put a pin in this. We're going to be talking about it really soon. So while we were at Harvard doing all of our sessions, board business was still going on as usual. And our secretary sends us the draft agenda of the upcoming meeting as usual. I opened the agenda to review it and there's something very unusual listed, uh, scheduled for that meeting by Lola Brooks was a major change to how the trustees would govern, which would completely disrupt the board and the school district even more. I will tell you exactly what that was in the next Storytime episode and I'm going to share some shocking findings about it, like hold on to your hats. I was livid about this item, but I didn't want to cause a scene. So I think through my options and I decide I'll talk to Linda Cabasos about it. Not only is she the vice president and she's supposed to be involved in the agenda setting process, but I've also started to like her and feel like her intentions are good and that our beliefs around public education are similar based on the way she's voting on things and the way that some of the things that she's saying in closed sessions. And I had been feeling like she was kind of warming up to me based on her responses to things that I said in closed sessions and whatnot. And I knew for damn well that she was not happy at all about the constant chaos that Superintendent Jara was causing throughout the entire district. And she was not happy about how limited the board was. So I decided to take the chance and ask her what was going on and trust that she wouldn't respond by teaming up with Lola or telling me not to mention it again or anything like that. So the next morning I approached Linda Cabasos. I pull out the agenda and I'm like, Linda, can you please explain this to me? Like what is this? She seemed genuinely as shocked and unhappy as I was about it. Uh, she says that she will inquire and get back to me. After the morning sessions and lunch, Linda updates me and she tells me that she found out that this has to do with the mysterious stranger. She's going to have an agenda briefing about it, try to find more information and try to get it changed to a information-only item, not an actual vote. I'm like, Linda, I want you to know that I am trying to be a good trustee. And I will hold off on fighting Lola about this and I will follow your lead. But if this comes to the meeting and gets approved as-is, I'm going to lose my absolute shit. She's like, I get it. Okay, so we're on the same page. Her and I chat a little bit over the next following days, which we hadn't really done before, so that was nice. We finished the final session. Everyone from my district leaves. I guess they had coordinated their flights with each other. Mine and some other trustees' flights were a little bit later, so we're kind of just killing time, uh, when I realized that I didn't get any swag. I'm like, anyone want to go find some free swag with me? They're like, uh, no, I'm too cool for free swag, or at least that's what I heard in my mind. So I venture through the halls and discover an administrative area that I'm not allowed to go in. So I go in and I ask them, you know, very nicely, hi, um, do you have any like beings, any free things I can have? They hook it up. And yes, everybody that was too cool to go hunt with me for free things, uh, definitely happily accepted it. I get to the airport and I board the plane and there's Linda Young on the same flight as me. She gets to airports a million hours early and I get to airports as they're closing the doors. So she is seated near the front with an open seat next to her. Score. She says, let's get to know each other. And we had a fantastic conversation. We're laughing the whole time. I learned so much about her and from her. She tells me, I had you all wrong. Not too sure what to think of that, but I'll take it. So I showed up in Boston, a lone wolf, but now I was leaving feeling like maybe I have a couple allies on the board. And I was right. Over the course of the next eighteen months, it got real, real bad. It was the superintendent and his four trustees versus me and the Lindas. Also, that would be a sweet band name. Me and the Lindas. The next Storytime episode will pick up from here. You will find out about the sneaky move that Lola Brooks made to our governance and what she did when she was confronted about it. Also, the mysterious stranger will be revealed. It's going to be a fun one. If you enjoy these episodes and you want to help support the continued production of the show, then visit unravelingeducation.com/sponsor. There are various opportunities there to become a supporter. Everything is appreciated and really helps a lot. Before you go, make sure to share the episode and subscribe so that you don't miss the next one. And keep stringing along. Also, if you have recommendations for a catchy sign-off, please leave it in the comments because clearly I'm running out of them. Ta ta. See you later. Goodbye for now. Unravel. There's beautiful art everywhere, gorgeous buildings. Oh my God. There's a Starbucks. Oh my gosh, this place is sick. Check this out. These are the living quarters where our group stays. They have coffee and office supplies and whiteboards and that's all I really need in life. And then my suite. There's shelves if I want shelves, but I don't know what I'll do with that. And then there's all of this and then there's this and boom. Almost done. Let's just move this pair of guy right there and remove the drawing guide and looks good. Getting ready to head out, but before I left, I realized I didn't have any swag, so I went through this whole building. I found a bunch of pencils and pens.